Yo no la tuve para máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y las reglas, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months I was in babyland. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla. Y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en los momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa.
Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Lynette has been wonderful, she's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en los momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy, and going in, becoming a parent for her.
Ready? Morning, everybody. I'm going to call today's meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Can we do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pollan. Here. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Richards.
Here.
Commissioner Weedman. Chair Babini.
Here. Thank you. All right, agenda item number two, Planning Commission Administration. Has this meeting been proper notice been established for this meeting?
Both items on the agenda have been properly noticed.
Thank you. All right, item three, Director's Report. Do we have any Director's Report today?
Good morning, Julia Krog, Planning Building Services Director. No report today, but I'm available for any questions.
Great. Do we have any public comment on the Director's Report today? Definitely, you know? All right. I don't think so. All right, thanks, everybody. Agenda item number four is Matters from the Public, Public Expression. Members of the public are welcome to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking action on matters not on the agenda. Individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission under Matters from the Public may do so in person via email or Zoom. If any members of the public logged into Zoom meeting wish to speak under public expression, please use the raised hand feature to allow staff to add you to the meeting. Do we have any requests for telecomment under public expression?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
So, so public expression is for items not on the agenda today? I would, yes. Okay. No worries.
You'll have a chance. When that item is up that you want to speak on, we'll call for public expression at that point as well. You're very welcome.
Thank you. So do we have any members of the public who wish to speak under public expression for items not on the agenda today? Okay. I'm not seeing any. Do we have any raised hands on Zoom?
There's no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. All right. Agenda item number five is our Consent Calendar. 5A Approval of Planning Commission Meeting Minutes from our June 5, 2025 meeting. Do we have any comments from the commissioners on our consent calendar today? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment on our consent calendar, which is our agenda meeting minutes from our June 5 meeting? Seeing none in the room? Any on Zoom?
Raised hands in Zoom.
Okay. Do we have a motion on our consent calendar?
I'd move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Weedman? Chair Babini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Then we are going to move into our regular calendar, which is our items for today. We are going to start with item 6A, which is U underscore 2024 dash 0004, the Selco Partnership Matt Moore, which was continued from June 5, 2025. This is the use permit to construct a new 65-foot-tall cellular antenna tower with a monopine-type design and four antenna sectors with three antennas per sector. I know that we did have some staff presentation last meeting. Do we want to move forward again? I guess that would be up to...
It's really up to discretion of the commission.
All right, well, I am going to open this item, open the public hearing for this item. Has there been any additional correspondence or telephone calls received?
All correspondence that have been received have been posted to the website.
Okay. Do we have staff presentation today?
Yes. Keith Gronendike, planner with this project. I'll just briefly run by the PowerPoint again.
Thank you.
Technical difficulties.
No worries, I'll give you a minute.
Okay, so this is the cell tower application for Selco Partnership Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless. The applicant agent is Matt Moore. Here's the project location, aerial photograph. And we have some photo simulations from a local road. Here's a site plan, site map, and the elevations of the tower. We have these site photos showing the existing structures. And then all the required findings for this project have been made. And the final comments and recommendation, adopt a negative declaration. Grant use permit U 2024 dash 004 for the project based on the facts and findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the resolution. There was one condition revision done this morning because the applicant wanted to change condition number seven, or 27. Currently, it reads one or more warning signs consistent with FCC and ANZI regulations shall be displayed in close proximity to the antenna tower. The wireless communications facility shall comply in all respects with the current standards of the American National Standards Institute, ANZI. The revision would be one or more warning signs consistent with FCC and ANZI regulations shall be displayed in close proximity to the antenna tower. The wireless communications facility shall comply in all respects with all FCC requirements, including any American National Standards Institute requirements incorporated therein. And... And here is a... There is a memo as well. There were a few other red lines on the resolution and conditions of approval. I'll read them into the record. Condition of approval number eight reads, "The antenna array shall not extend more than 30 inches from the structure to which it is attached. The applicant has stated that 30-inch separation is not possible. As such, the applicant has requested that the 30-inch requirement be changed to 36 inches." Staff does not have any issue with this request. "To ensure consistency with the Mendocino County Code, Section 20.236.025D11, a condition number 28 has been added to address any possible damage to Timberline Road." It reads, "To ensure that no impacts occur to the existing private road, Timberline Road that serves the proposed project, the following shall be required. Prior to issuance of any building permit associated with the project, the applicant shall provide to the Department of Planning and Building Services an assessment of the condition of the existing private road, Timberline Road, from Sherwood Road, County Road 311, to the project site. The assessment shall include photos and videos as well as a written narrative to document the road's current or existing condition. And B, prior to activation of the facility, any damage to the road associated with the construction activity shall be repaired to condition that is equal to or better than the existing road condition. And C, within two weeks after any road improvements are completed, the applicant shall provide to the Department of Post-Construction Assessment of the condition of the private road serving the site to verify that adequate road repairs have been completed. The post-assessment shall include photos and video as well as a written narrative to document the road's condition. Additionally, minor changes to dates numbering and other sentence additions and strike-throughs have been made to the resolution and conditions of approval. A red line version of the resolution and conditions of approval are attached to this memo along with being posted on the website." One other talking point is code enforcement, about code enforcement on the project. Code enforcement could only add a condition to address, or staff could only add a condition to address the lease area of the property. The code enforcement department is largely complaint-driven and the property owner is not involved in the use permit application. For the cellular antenna tower, a condition of approval could be added to require that prior to the issuance of a building permit for the project, the cell tower lease site is deemed free from any code violations by the Mendocino County Code Enforcement Department. Otherwise, the Planning Commission can refer the site to code enforcement for investigation, a separate process from the use permit. That concludes my presentation.
So, and if I may, Julia Krog, Planning Building Services Director, I'll just add that the last portion that Planner Keith Gronendike was just talking about was in response to the June 5 Planning Commission meeting where there was discussion about potential code violations that may be present on the site or like general refuse and things that may require cleanup. So as he stated, you know, with the use permit that we have in front of us, the, I think the commission could potentially condition the lease area because the applicant for this application does not have control over the remainder of the site. But then the Planning Commission could refer the matter to our code enforcement division to conduct an investigation on the remainder of the property and handle any code compliance concerns through their typical processes.
Thank you. All right, thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions from our commissioners for staff on the presentation or the project as a whole?
Sure, I have a question. I recognize that the applicant is not the property owner. However, the property owner is entering into a fiduciary relationship with the applicant. And I think we can have a special condition on this permit that requires that the site be proven to be cleaned up before issuance of the permit. And that would not put it on the applicant to do. It would put it on the property owner to do that work in order to proceed with this project.
I guess maybe that would be a question for...
That's a question. Even though it didn't seem like a question, I guess it felt like a statement, but it is a question.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski, when thinking about adding a condition like this, agreed the owner is not just not involved. Here, the applicant has direct control over the leased area and really nexus and proportionality for the purpose of the application is more tied to the leased area. And requiring the company to interact and do work beyond that leased area, I think, potentially putting more of a burden on that cell tower company applicant than we can reasonably require, given that the application is within, I think will be a fenced area, a leased area that's defined. So in terms of requiring that engagement to go forward, I think the consumer base is a condition that would meet nexus and proportionality standards.
I am definitely welcome to a discussion between the commissioners on referring the project to code enforcement, to have that investigation done, which then would fall on the property owner as a whole, not necessarily this application itself. So I am welcome to have that discussion if we want to during our discussion point. But I do agree with counsel just that this project is so focused on just that leased area that I think it would be difficult to get that approved with, between the landlord and the leasing, I'm not sure. But I do welcome argument or discussion about it as well.
I guess I have a question for our planning director on that one. So would you, would that be that this, the granting of this would be conditioned upon some lack of code violation being present on site before this could go through? Or when you say we could get referred to code enforcement, so what?
Sure, yeah. So it would not be that the permit would be conditioned itself. That would be a separate and apart that we would essentially submit this to code enforcement as a, basically a complaint. And then they would go ahead and begin their investigative process and handle it through their typical code enforcement processes. So it'd be separate and apart from this use permit. What I was suggesting, that if the commission wanted to add any type of condition, it would, we feel that it would be most appropriate that it be limited to the lease area, given that the project is really focused on this really small portion of the property and the nexus and proportionality concerns. So that you could condition saying that you want to see that that lease area is kept free of any sort of code violations, but then the overall site is referred through a code enforcement process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can have further discussion on that too because I have some other comments on there as well. Did you have any other questions or comments for staff? Okay. All right. Any questions or comments for staff? I did have one question that came up from the comment received that was posted on June 6. Just a refresher for the commission, for anyone in the room, what the noticing distance is for properties adjacent to the site?
Sure. The noticing distance for cell tower applications is 1,000 feet.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any applicant presentation or do we have the applicant wanting to speak today? Thank you. Please state your name.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Matthew Moore. I am an authorized agent of Verizon Wireless and the project applicant, the applicant before us here. Good to see everybody in person this time around. I don't have a separate presentation. I did just want to address some of the concerns again that we touched on a couple of weeks ago, namely safety concerns. When we're talking about concerns about fire here, I think the first thing to recognize CPCC does mandate that we have to have generators at these sites now, recognizing the importance of if your power goes out, still being to stay in, being able to stay in contact with neighbors, friends, family, and that kind of stuff. We are cognizant of the dangers. The tank itself that's associated with the generator is triple-walled to prevent any kind of, all leakage is, it is monitored 24/7 off-site by technicians. If anything goes wrong at any point, there's any leak, anything starts to overheat, they're alerted, they can shut the site down remotely, send technicians out immediately. And on top of that, technicians do visit the site once, twice a month just for routine maintenance purposes and to run the generator just to make sure that everything is working as it should be. And aside from that, we will, once we proceed with the building permit process, the project will go to Mendocino County Fire for a full review as well. They'll provide comments and we will provide by any they require. And I did just want to reiterate that the site itself is fully FCC compliant. We did submit for, and so, yeah, we comply with all standards applicable there as well. With that, I don't have anything else, but I'm happy to hear any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant from the commission? Okay, great. All right, thank you so much, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. I am going to open this item up for public comment. The commission will now hear public comment on this item. The commission will start with public comments in the room and then hear from telecommuters, commenters that are connected virtually via Zoom. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with members of the audience or staff. Do we have members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Not seeing any in the room. Do we have any online?
There are no raised hands in Zoom.
Okay. Do we have any final remarks from staff?
No final remarks.
Okay. Do we have any final remarks from the applicant? Seeing none. Okay, do we have any final comments or questions from the commission for staff or the applicant? All right, seeing none. All right. I wanted to just touch a little bit more on our discussion on code enforcement. I guess my only comment would be that if the commission is the one recommending to refer to code enforcement, I feel that the neighbors have that process as well and they're going to have, you know, the best evidence to provide to them, what those violations are. I think we would just be recommending it for like abroad, we want you to go out there and look to see what's wrong, whereas they may say, you know, these structures need to be looked at, they have, you know, refuse in this area. You know, I think that it may be a better use for the neighbors or the adjacent property owners to make that complaint since that process is available and code enforcement in Mendocino County is complaint-based. But that is just my personal note. And so I wasn't sure if any of the other commissioners had any other further comments on that issue.
I'm just wondering if there were prior complaints to code enforcement of property.
I don't believe that I saw, but I can confirm that.
I know there's some reticence on adjacent property owners making complaints, so be helpful if we started the ball rolling.
I have a comment. All of the regulatory takings relate to takings. So I'm talking about Nolan versus California Coastal Commission, Dolan versus City of Tygar, Coons versus St. John's River Water Management District, and Sheets versus Colorado of El Dorado revolve around takings that occur on separate parcels or government takings requiring applicants to do activities outside of the scope of the property owner's parcel. There's one property owner here, they have one parcel. They're doing a lease to somebody else. The problem is on their parcel. They have full control and authority over fixing that up. I recognize that you don't want to put the applicant in the position of having to clean up that property owner's stuff. And I agree with that. But I think that we can make this permit conditional on that site being cleaned up, whether by this applicant or not. If the rest of the, at the end of the day, behind all of this is a property owner who wants to earn income out of this project. So that property owner could just as easily have been the applicant because it's for work on their property. And, you know, bluntly, their property is a mess. It's awful, based on the photos. Absent that, I would highly recommend that the Planning Commission, as part of our action today, do refer this to... as part of our action today, do refer this to code enforcement because I think it does have more weight coming from all of us than from me. I don't like to see situations where we are approving permits for new development on sites that have such obvious and egregious code violations. I think it sets a terrible precedent. And I have watched the county's code enforcement office let code violations sit for years that I have personally made complaints about because they're really overburdened. They don't have enough staff. So if we have a condition on the permit that requires that the property get cleaned up, that's going to put a little gas in the property owner's engine to get the work done. And we're not relying on an overburdened code enforcement office to try and fix an issue that really should be remedied as part of approval for development on a specific property.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion on that item from the planning commission?
If I may just respond to Commissioner Richards' question too. So there was a previous case out on this site in 2006, which was closed. And it was at that time, I believe, substandard housing was the concern. So I, that case was closed back in 2006. Doesn't mean, conditions can certainly change in 20 years, or roughly 20 years.
I have a very just uninformed question, I guess. So if we have transient habitation on a property, would that be code enforcement or the sheriff?
I'm sorry, you mean as in individuals?
That have come onto the property and decided to set up camp or, you know, I'm just curious if that would be a sheriff action or a code enforcement action?
It's probably would be initially a complaint going to code enforcement and then it may be coordination with the sheriff's department as well. Because there could be a combination of factors there where you may have unpermitted development and additionally individuals who we may need assistance from law enforcement.
Okay, I was just curious.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Gudrowski, if you're getting to trespass, that's a very different situation. That would be the person talking to the sheriff or a court or getting someone off a property in a legal action for that. So if it's allowed in some form of the property owner, then you get into a landlord tenant situation.
Okay, I was just curious if that was something within the purview of code enforcement or not. I appreciate it. Okay. At this time, I am going to invite a motion from the commission.
I'll make a stab.
Is it possible to have our, the resolution put up on the screen? If not, we can take a stab as well.
Before we make a motion, can you guys hear me? My mic seems kind of dead. Okay, so before we make a motion, I'd like to entertain or have the planning commission entertain an additional condition, which would be condition number 29, which would be, you know, prior to issuance of the building permit for the cell tower, that all code violations will be eliminated from the site.
I would be more interested in us agreeing to refer to code enforcement at this time than in putting the condition on the permit.
That's fair. Let's see if I have a second.
Oh, yes.
Because I made a motion. So my motion is to adopt the resolution subject to all the findings and special conditions with the following additional special condition, that prior to issuance of the building permit, existing code violations on the property will be remediated. That gives the property owner additional time to go ahead and. Assuming that building permit's required for a cell tower, but I would assume one is required. And it also gives the cell tower operator an opportunity to take the project through the building permit process, which is probably a three to four month process. It gives them an opportunity to put some pressure on the property owner to deal with their issues.
So when you say property, you mean the entire parcel, not the leased area?
Correct.
Do we know what the alleged code violations are exactly? I mean, there are some allusions made to them, but we don't, we haven't seen that there are clear code violations.
I think they're pretty obvious in the photo montage from the site. There's a lot of debris, there's clearly some housing that's very substandard. There's a number of abandoned vehicles and a lot of vegetation debris.
We don't have a current list of code viol, there is no code violation that is.
So if there aren't any code violations and they've dealt with it, this condition wouldn't harm the applicant or the property owner at all?
I guess it's just predicated upon the fact that we're saying that they're, well, I guess they're not. I'm going to say it seems like it's predicated on the fact that there are code violations present, but I guess if code enforcement goes out there and says nothing's wrong, then they're done.
They're done.
Do we have a second? Okay, do we have a second? Sorry, my mic was on.
If I could interrupt, I do have some photos of the site.
Do we want to look at the photos again? I'm happy, yes, thank you.
So this is looking north. Dilapidated yet or something. And looking west, I think the tower would be right in front of this area here. And this is southeast. One of these structures is supposed to be removed. The agent might be able to shed some light on that. So those are the only photos I have.
Thank you.
That structure is supposed to be removed as a, to accommodate this tower to be there? Is that what you're saying?
I believe so. It's shown on the site plan as being removed.
Yes, I believe that it's located in the area where the tower would be, so it would, the tower necessitates the removal of the structure.
Yeah, can't really read it on this site plan.
I have another question I should be able to answer myself because I've been looking at this. But when that's removed, that shed right there, that just leaves the house as a structure? Like a built structure? Or are there other barns? I couldn't quite tell how many dilapidated.
There's some vehicles obviously and a camper, but.
I think we have a comment from the applicant as well. If you can come up and state your name, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Matthew Moore, again, I'm authorized agent of Verizon Wireless. Keith, if you wouldn't mind going back to the first site photo that you showed? So looking there, we're going to remove that kind of rusted metal concrete area and the cell tower is going to go there, but the main barn building will remain at the request of the landlord.
Do we have roll call?
To the chair, this is, this isn't the motion itself, because we have, this is.
The motion with the amendment to the, to the special condition. So that's adding special condition 29.
This is more just on the special condition, but the motion would be for, to prove the resolution as revised.
Correct.
With the added special condition.
That's what I, that's the way I made the motion.
We do have a second. Do we have roll call vote?
Commissioner Wedeman? Wedeman? Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Chair Babini?
I'm going to say no.
Motion passes with Chair Babini ascending.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to our next item, which is 6B MS underscore 2024 dash 0003. Kenneth and Don Lorenzi, minor subdivision of an existing 32.72 acre parcel into two lots and one remainder parcel. Lot one would be 10.40 acres. Lot two would be 5.03 acres and the remainder parcel would be 17.69 acres. I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. Has there been any correspondence or telephone calls received?
Correspondence have been posted to the website.
Thank you. Do we have staff, staff presentation of this item?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is Liam. As was stated, this is a minor subdivision. This, we've prepared a presentation for you. Can see the owner applicant agent information up here. And I will continue on. These are just a couple of maps showing the general vicinity of the project and a more detailed, more detailed map, aerial photo of the site. So you can see that the property in question, a large portion of it is used as a vineyard. There's three residences on the site. There's a manmade pond, several dirt roads and gravel roads. This box in the middle is actually a separate parcel. It's not part of this subdivision. So I'll move on here. Here's the tentative map. As was stated earlier, this is a subdivision to create two lots and a remainder parcel. You can see that lot one here, well, each lot, each resulting lot would contain one residence. There's an existing 60-foot wide easement that was created by a previous subdivision. That's what's listed here as Lorenzi Road. And there's several other easements on the property, including a well and water line easement and a public utility easement. And so you can see that lot one and the remainder parcel would essentially be bisected by this private road. And that lot two here would connect to a private road, but would also take access from Lake Mendocino Drive to the south. So I already kind of went through some of the background, but again, this is a 32, about a 32 to 33 acre parcel. It's within the Rural Residential RR5 General Plan Classification and Zoning District. As I mentioned earlier, there was a subdivision in 1992 that created the current parcel. And that subdivision also included the property to the north and to the east. Those are both listed as Lorenzi here on the map to the right. And so this current parcel used to be part of those two other parcels as well. Again, the existing uses are primarily residential and agricultural. Again, there's a 60-foot wide easement that was created by the prior subdivision and several other easements. As I mentioned before, this parcel in the middle, the Castro parcel is not part of this subdivision. And again, there's an existing manmade pond that would be on the proposed lot two. So there's no additional development that's proposed as part of this subdivision. And each lot would meet the minimum five acre lot size requirement. Each lot would also be required to show minimum setbacks of 30 feet from front rear inside property lines. And each lot, each resulting lot would contain one residence, which meets the density requirements for the RR5 zone. And the proposed subdivision is consistent with other general plan and zoning regulations as discussed in the staff report. There was an archaeological survey that was conducted for this project and no research, no resources were found. And that survey was accepted by the Archaeological Commission at one of their meetings. And the property is not within a flood hazard zone or a dam inundation area. You might have seen on the prior maps that property is fairly close to Lake Mendocino. So as far as the Division of Land Regulations go, the 1992 subdivision that created this parcel was carried out by a different owner, so it's not considered accumulation of parcels within our Division of Land Regulations. And the subdivision committee held a meeting and unanimously recommended approval of this project. Again, each lot meets the minimum lot size requirements and the minimum width depth requirements, except for a strip of lot one that would be considered a flag lot. And I'll go over that a little bit later. Each lot would have a depth less than three times the average width and that's consistent with the, with the regulations. Access would be available to each lot via a county road, either East Side Calpella Road or Lake Mendocino Drive. And each lot has an existing connection to Millview County Water District and each residence is served by an existing septic system. However, a replacement system for lot two has not yet been identified. And so Environmental Health has recommended a condition requiring that prior to the recordation of the parcel map, that that replacement system be identified. The Ukiah Valley Fire Authority has jurisdiction over this site in terms of fire protection. They responded with no comment on the proposed subdivision. And the Department of Transportation is recommending that a residential driveway approach be constructed from East Side Calpella Road onto that private road, Lorenzi Road. And that's reflected in condition number 19 in the resolution. So a little bit more about the flag lot. So you can see with lot one here, this black line is showing where lot one separates from the remainder parcel. And so, I don't know if you can, I don't think you're, oh, you are able to see my cursor. So essentially this kind of circle that I'm circling here would be that strip that would cause this to be a flag lot. And there is a section of the Division of Land Regulations that allows the planning commission to approve flag lots in certain circumstances. And those flag lots must be at least 20 feet wide and no greater than 300 feet in depth. So this proposed flag lot does meet the 20-foot width requirement, but as you can see, it would be greater than 300 feet in depth. It would be about 440 feet long. And so the subdivider is requesting an exception to this 300-foot depth requirement and that's taken out of section 1787 of the Division of Land Regulations. And in order to grant that exception, the planning commission has to find that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the proposed division of land and that granting the exception will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the surrounding property. So for this strip here in particular, the special circumstance that we see is that the existing parcel configuration and the width of these adjacent properties here, the Ivasco and Loyos properties, prevent a direct connection from lot one to East Side Calpella Road without creating a flag lot of more than 300 feet. And the, the flag lot wouldn't be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to the surrounding property because it wouldn't impact access to any of the adjacent properties. And so, again, the blue line here shows that the width of these adjacent properties and the existing parcel configuration kind of prevents being able to connect lot one to East Side Calpella Road without creating this long strip. However, you know, it is theoretically feasible that the parcel could be configured in such a way that this strip would be widened and would extend down into this vineyard here to prevent it from being considered a flag lot because it would no longer be a strip. However, I feel that it's more logical to keep the bisector of lot one and the remainder parcel along Lorenzi Road rather than, rather than creating this odd parcel shape where it would basically take a 90-degree turn and perhaps go along this dirt road here and cut into the vineyard at some point to prevent it from being that strip. And so staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the flag lot and the exception to allow that connection to be made. And so just a couple of other notes. An initial study and a mitigated NEGDEC were prepared for this project pursuant to CEQA. We did receive a comment from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and they recommended that wildlife free fence, wildlife friendly fencing be installed for any future modifications to fencing, that any future landscaping be of locally native. any future modifications to fencing, that any future landscaping be of locally native species, that the property owner target the removal of any non-native invasive species, and that if future development involves grading or vegetation removal, a floristic survey is recommended. And so those recommendations are reflected in the recommended conditions of approval and would essentially be placed as notes on the parcel map. However, I did just want to note with the wildlife friendly fencing, since the property is currently used as a vineyard, that requirement may conflict with the existing agricultural use. If, you know, the purpose of the fencing surrounding the vineyard is to prevent animals from damaging the crops, then that creates kind of a conflict with those comments. And so I believe the recommendation is to kind of modify that, that note that would be placed on the parcel map to basically say if that agricultural use is abandoned in the future, that modifications to fencing should be of a wildlife friendly design to prevent the property owner from needing to install wildlife friendly design, wildlife friendly fencing that might encourage wildlife from coming onto the property and damaging, damaging the crops if they continue to use it as a vineyard. And we did receive another comment from the Department of Conservation. And that comment had to do with important farmlands and the potential conversion of important farmlands that this subdivision might induce. And that was discussed somewhat in the initial study and the mitigated NEGDEC, but I did provide a memo that goes into a bit more detail on that. So as I mentioned previously, the property already has three residences and each lot would contain one existing, one residence. So splitting the property up into these three parcels would allow the property owner, the property owners to potentially construct either an accessory dwelling unit or a second residential unit on each of those lots. And so if that happened in the future, then there is the potential that that development could convert some of these important farmlands to non-agricultural use. You can see on the map here that there are certain sections of the property that are either considered prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance by the Department of Conservation. And that's through their farmland mapping and monitoring program. However, staff maintains that those potential impacts would be less than significant for several reasons. The first one is that the property itself has been classified as rural residential five acre minimum since at least 1982. And that farmland mapping and monitoring program started to identify these prime farmlands and farmlands of statewide importance in 1984. So even before that program began, the county has essentially marked this as an area that would be for future, you know, residential growth while allowing some agricultural use to remain. In addition, the, since the property owner is not proposing any development at this time, the location and the size of potential future development is unknown. The property could be sold in the future to a different owner and we don't know what that future owner might end up doing with the property. And then under our existing regulations, there are accessory structures of potentially equal or greater impact that could be built without additional environmental review that would convert these agricultural lands to a non-agricultural use. For example, if the current property owner wanted to build a shed or a barn on this property, they would be able to do so without having to go through any environmental review. And then simply the, the size of potential future conversion would be minimal. And for example, if each of the lots would end up building an accessory dwelling unit, the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit is 1,200 square feet. And so the, I guess, maximum total build out, if they decided to do an ADU would be 3,600 square feet. And that represents approximately 0.5% of the total important farmlands on the property. And we just see that as, as a fairly minimal potential impact. And so with that, staff is recommending adoption of the mitigated NEGDEC and approval of the subdivision per the staff report and the revised resolution. So that's all I have and available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Liam, and thank you for your math there. I appreciate it. Do we have any questions from the commissioners on the staff presentation or the project? Please.
I just want to compliment you on your staff report. It was very thorough. Way thorougher than I would even do, so good job. I had a question about lot two and its peculiar shape. And I just kind of wanted to understand what the applicant's rationale was for kind of cutting to agricultural areas to accommodate a very thin road when the residential units can get access off of, I think it's Mendocino Avenue to the south, Mendocino, Lake Mendocino Drive. It just seemed like a weird configuration. And I mean, they could easily just do an easement for the road. You know what their thinking was?
Not exactly. I do know we have, I think we have one of the property owners here who might be able to answer that. But my assumption would be potentially emergency access to have an additional access road if there was a fire or something. I think also, I think as far as the, the width of that sort of area that connects to the private road, it's probably, probably intending to allow it to be of sufficient width that that parcel itself wouldn't be considered a flag lot to, that would have a strip of land. But beyond that, I'm not sure what the intention is.
I may just add, I think the, because the minimum zoning parcel size requirement is five acres, it provides them to that 5.03, which I think is also then preserving the production area on the remainder parcel. So they still accomplish the five acre minimum requirement to create the parcel while preserving the maximum amount of the, the production area.
That's a good explanation for a very weird shape.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Did you have any further comments for staff? Commissioner Weedman?
No, I think it was a thorough report and I appreciate it.
We have any other comments from the commission?
Other than it being sad, very sad. I was just curious, Lojos and is it Yvasku? Is that how you pronounce the other?
I don't know.
I think it's Yvasku. I went to high school with an Yvasku.
I know it's Lojos. So do they use that strip or that road to access their parcels? I can't.
No, I don't believe they do. I believe they use East Side Calpella Road and then there, I think there's a kind of a left turn and then a right turn immediately that allows them to use that. But I'm not 100% sure.
All right. Do we have the applicant present that wishes to speak at all? Inside or on Zoom? Saying none? Okay. Thank you. All right. This, at this time, I'm going to do open for public comment. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments in the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with members of the audience or staff. Do we have any members of the public on Zoom for this item? Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Now we are going to hear from folks in the room. Please come to the podium and state your name. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Linda Rodriguez Carr. I am a neighbor to the Lorenzi property. And in regards to the shapes of all those different pieces, that's all members of the family. So, you know, they all live together and the houses on those three different parcels. In any case, I'm at the south side of the vineyard. Okay? So I'm confused as to a couple of things. Lake Mendocino Road connecting to this property would mean to have to build a road somewhere from the vineyard going towards the lake to get to Lake Mendocino or coming through my property and my neighbor's property on the other side. So I don't know how you would make a road to Lake Mendocino Drive. The East Side Calpella has been, there's an easement, I have an easement, that my neighbors, the Lorenzi property has their sister lives in front and she has an easement. And then there's another easement we call Jojo Lane. And I don't understand the necessity to make even more roads, but that's for you guys to figure out, not for me. And the flooding situation, I have pictures, I get flooded every year. I'm right next door. To put this in perspective, if you know where the Mendocino Clubhouse is, I think it's called something else now, my property is right behind it. All the water runs off the hills onto my property and I'm forever with wattles and tying ropes around my waist to clear from one culvert to another. So I don't understand this no flooding possibility. I flood every single year and have pictures to prove it. So I question that one little thing. But other than that, I'm a neighbor. I understand the need for family to dibby up the property and I'm fine with it. I just wanted to know what kind of impact it would create for me. I have a horse and currently I live alone. My husband passed away and I, I'm not really familiar with these kinds of rules, so please forgive me. Okay? I'm, I'm so new to this. I'm, oh, anyway. So if you can help assarge my feelings right here and tell me everything's going to be okay, Linda, I would appreciate it, especially about the flooding thing.
Could I see a map or the site plan while you're still standing up there?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll show you where I live.
Or the aerial view might be better, might be easier. The aerial view.
Yeah, fine. It's fine. So with your cursor, can you show us what she talked about?
Sure. So I think your property is this label as Baker here to the south. Yes. So with this subdivision, it wouldn't be creating any new roads. I think what I was trying to convey is that this lot two down here has an existing access from Lake Mendocino Drive into where this residence is near the pond. And, correct.
Okay.
Exactly. And this other road that connect, this Lorenzi road that connects to these other parcels would remain the same. Exactly. And, and as far as the flooding goes, the property is not, so the FEMA, Federal Emergency Management, I forget what the exact name is, but they produce maps of flood zones. And my point was just that this property is not within one of those flood zones. Doesn't necessarily mean that it, doesn't necessarily mean that it can't flood. It's just that FEMA has not designated this area as a flood zone.
Well, that's really it for me. I'm, you guys did a wonderful job. Most of my questions got answered as Mr. Crowley was speaking. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's my birthday today, guys. I'm going out to lunch.
Happy birthday.
Birthday, all right.
Happy writing.
Yeah.
Did we have any other public comment in the audience today? All right. Do we have any final remarks? Thank you. Do we have any final remarks from staff?
None from me. Thank you.
Okay. And do we have any final remarks from an applicant? All right. We're good then. Okay. Do we have any final questions from the commission to staff? Saying none. All right. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and the matter is before the commission. Public comment is no longer permitted. Do we have a motion from the commission on this item or any further discussion?
I'll move. By resolution.
As 2024-0003, including an exception to flag lot, flat, sorry, flag lot depth standards based on all the facts and findings and subject to all the conditions of approval contained in our resolution.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Weedman?
Yes.
Chair Babini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to our agenda item number seven, which is matters from staff. We have a special item today, which is item 7A, which is discussion and possible action including adoption of a resolution recognizing James F. Finan, Commission Services Supervisor for 40 years of public service to the state of California. We are going to invite public comment on this item, but I did want to, I, I know you have public comment, but I wanted to present this to you as well.
Oh, let's see.
And if I?
I have to read the whole thing? Okay, I'll read it, I'll read it.
And if you were, are you going to read it? Okay.
Okay. All right, I will read it. "The resolution of the Mendocino County Planning Commission expresses thanks and appreciation to James F. Finan. He has served in various public service positions for 40 years and whereas he has served as the Commission Services Supervisor to the Planning Commission twice, retiring and then coming back to the Planning and Building Department because he couldn't stay away. And where he has now become a scanning guru and completed the scanning of one entire Fort Bragg file cabinet by himself, verifying if the pages were dark enough to read. And whereas he has rejected numerous incomplete staff report submittals for various hearing bodies that did not include the legal notice, agenda summary of notice of final action or some other document that the plan, planner found trivial but which was very important to commission staff. And whereas he could be counted on to always print the board of supervisors' agenda and have it ready on staff's desk to review every meeting. And whereas he has navigated through treacherous roads, snowstorms and wild animals from Lake County to Ukiah every day to be early for work. And whereas he was provided staff support to the front counter for building application intake and submittal and can be counted upon to pick up every phone call and say, please hold. And whereas his affinity for Disney characters and movies even extended into running a half marathon in Disneyland. And whereas he has always been willing to take a walk in break with staff, morning or afternoon in rain, sleet and snow, with giant hail pelting the umbrellas or in the scorching 100-plus degree heat. And whereas he has been a dedicated and devoted public servant and has served the county faithfully. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mendocino County Planning Commission hereby sincerely and publicly say thank you for 40 years of service on behalf of the citizens of Mendocino County. That the Mendocino County Planning Commission wishes you well on your departure from county service again and extends its best wishes for success in your retirement."
All right.
I am going to invite public comment.
We need a motion first.
Do we? It's not in my script. Okay. It says public comment before motion. Please state your name.
James Finan. I'm going to thank you for the resolution from the Planning Commission. I want to thank all the planning staff in building for the last five years. Personally, I'd like to like, like to thank John and Julia for the great leadership of the department. I'd like to thank the commission staff, mainly Jocelyn, who I could not really run the department without. And my great boss for the last five years, Adrian. I would like to thank all the commission staff, including all the commissions that I have worked with, Airport Land Use, Planning Commission, Mendocino Historical Review Board, Archaeological Commission and other committees such as the subdivision committee, coastal permit administrator and zoning administrator. I also like to thank the clerk of the board for all of staff and support and understanding during my time on the planning and building department. It's been a long haul for me, 40 years, working in Santa Clara County for the municipal and superior courts, here in Mendocino, working for public health and Mendocino Superior Court, and finally ending my career here in planning and building. Again, thank you all for a great, a great honor.
Thank you so much. This matter is before the commission. Do we have any other comments from our commissioners?
I, I would like to thank, I don't have my mind, but I would like to thank you for, I think since I've been a planning commissioner, you have been the most organized, friendly, knowing where to go for, for information. And it's been invaluable. And not only that, you've also had really good attitude and a good disposition. You know, the work's hard and I wish you the best. I hope you get out there and travel where you want to go, Jim. And thank you.
I want to see footage of this Disneyland marathon because that's been a dream of mine as well. Thank you, Jim, so much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I'll just add, as someone who's been in public service a lot myself, most people have no idea how hard the job is since I really slew you for the years. Sound appreciated. A good job. And have fun now.
Any other final comments from commission? All right. Thank you. I'm going to invite a motion from the commission to adopt this resolution.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I will second that. Can we have roll call? Final roll call, please.
Commissioner Weedman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollan?
Wholeheartedly.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Chair Babini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Do we have any other items from commission today? Do you want to talk about?
I, I have one request. Sorry, I just took away my mic thingamajing.
I hear you still.
Okay, you can hear me. I hate to admit this, but every time I need to look up the Planning Commission agenda, I like do this little search, and all these things come up that are like archived planning and condition agendas and other stuff that's just on the website from ancient days, I guess. It would be great if your ITech person could optimize it so that it goes actually to the Planning Commission's agenda, and maybe one idea is to actually have it as part of the Board of Supervisors, you know, in the Legistar system so that it's easier for everybody to find, because like I'm a planning commissioner, so I know it's out there somewhere, and I know like it's kind of embarrassing to admit, but I don't have it bookmarked here. Maybe I should just bookmark it here, but I just think for the general public, like they would be lost. So just an idea.
Sure, and thank you for that comment. We have been exploring for software similar to what the clerk of the board utilizes for agenda publications and such, so that way it's a, hopefully an easier format. So we've been working through that.
And maybe just take down those legacy links that pop up, like just do a Google search yourself.
Yeah.
You'll see what I'm talking about.
We'll talk with our IT department as well, so, thank you.
Any other items from the commission?
I have one just in an update on what's happening in the world of vacation rentals and the camping issue. Where are we?
So I'll let Mark start about short-term rentals, and then I can answer about low intent, or actually Liam can answer about low intensity.
Senior Planner Mark Kleiser, we have finished the survey online and finished all the stakeholder meetings. Currently, we're working on a memo to present to the board, and that'll be the last board meeting in July. And then it will come, of course, to the PC with the draft ordinance.
Thank you.
And for me, it's very similar. We just had our last stakeholder meeting for low intensity camping last night here in Ukiah, and so at this point, we're going to essentially start working on the draft ordinance, the environmental review, and digging into and trying to incorporate all those comments and questions that we received at those meetings. And so similarly, you can expect to eventually see something before you in the future. I will, I will say however, that I think for the low intensity camping, we're monitoring the Assembly Bill that's out there in the state to see what happens with that, since it's still in the Senate right now, because we will most likely want to use that as a framework for whatever ordinance we do, and wait to see if that gets approved before we come up with our own regulations.
Do we have any like projected timelines on any of this? On either, either one before it goes to the board or the Planning Commission? Just in, could be loose?
Mark Kleiser, senior planner, well, like I said, we're going to the board at the end of July. After that, we will craft a draft ordinance and probably bring it to Planning Commission early September, mid-September.
And then for camping, I believe the Assembly Bill, if passed, wouldn't take effect until next year, and so we probably wouldn't have a draft ordinance ready until some point next year. Beyond that, I'm not sure exactly when we'd be able to bring it back.
Thank you for doing environmental review for that.
Anything else from commissioners? All right. Invite a motion for adjournment today.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you, Jim.